We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Thank you. It is April 19th, 2023. It's 10 o'clock and all three county commissioners here. And we're going to have consents and approval. And since we did not have a meeting last week, you're going to do both?
Yeah. So these were vouchers that were approved to be paid April 12th.
Correct.
General County Fund, 421,52832. Camp Muffley, 11979. Mason Dixon Park, 54562. Mon County Center, 7,14271. Recreation Levy, 71,57915. Assessors Valuation, 17787. Payroll, 1,075469853. Morgantown Industrial TIP, 29,7564. ARPA, 19,650. Parks and Recreation, 35,71902. Purchasing Card Vouchers, General County, 5,85524. Mon County Center, 88373. Recreation Levy, 62187. Assessors Valuation, 5,620. For a voucher total for April 12th is 2,35389249. Okay. Consent and approval for today's meeting.
Okay.
We have no exonerations. I'm sorry. We do have exonerations. 16 exonerations for 7,2607. Minutes for April 5th, 2023. Vouchers, General County, 122,36128. Magistrate Court, $11.90911. 22,36828. Chestnut Ridge Park, 10,48398. Camp Muffley, 1,028989. Mason Dixon Park, 2,0061310. Mon County Center, 34346. Transportation Levy, 336,18178. Fire Levy, 226,071.72 cents. Recreation Levy, 1541152. Library Levy, 82,51655. Reallocated coal, 8,0058333. Assessors Valuation, 1,024340. Law Enforcement Forfeiture, 11,785. Purchasing Card Vouchers, General County, 11,50549. 911, 18576. Chestnut Ridge Park, 23876. Mason Dixon Park, 32389. Recreation Levy, 18151. ARPA, 2,035980. For a voucher total of 994,76440. Position vacancies for boards and authorities listed on our website and fiduciary orders for April 19th, 2023.
Just one clarification. You also had fiduciary orders from April 12th that was on the other.
But you didn't approve any. There wasn't anything approved last week.
Okay. Are we going to approve those ones from the 12th or are they all combined with that 19th?
They're all carried over. Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve both consents and approval?
Move to approve a consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Pop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we have?
You have some additional fiduciary items.
Yes.
There's a creditor claim in the John Raymond Crayton estate.
Okay. The fiduciary, or I moved that we moved this estate to be afforded. I moved the estate be afforded to a fiduciary commissioner to address the claim.
Second.
Sorry.
Pop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now we have the?
Okay. Recommendation from Fiduciary Commissioner Beth Amina regarding the Bradley Richard Crowe Estate.
Crowe Estate. So on this one, there was an objection filed. And they, the fiduciary commissioner had a hearing and recommended that the objection be dismissed and approve the final settlement. So I would make a motion that we accept the fiduciary commissioner's recommendation to dismiss the objection and accept the final settlement.
Second.
Pop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Recommendation from Fiduciary Commissioner Armistead regarding the Franklin Lynn Matthews Estate.
Excuse me. This one, there was a, it was a hearing conducted by the commissioner. And the recommendation is to dismiss the petition because the settlement was reached between the parties. And so the motion would be to dismiss the petition and accept the settlement in the case, which should solve, which should finish the estate.
Just one clarification. Sorry. Fiduciary commissioner recommend, had no objection to accepting. The petitioner submitted a petition for elective share.
Right.
They reached a settlement and now she is submitting a petition to dismiss that petition for elective share with prejudice. And the fiduciary commissioner had no objection.
Right.
So.
Amended.
He didn't recommend that. He just said no objection. So just that clarification is all. But anyhow, second.
Pop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then finally, the Chadwick Chapman Estate. If you recall, this was before Judge Scott.
Right.
She has ordered that back to you all to actually set a hearing. So in order to give the parties notice, I suggest we do that about, well, I was going to say 30 days, but when do you all want to?
First, we have to reopen the estate because it was closed by order. And then the recommendation from the judge was to reopen the estate and then conduct a hearing on the objection, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Is this closed?
I don't know whether it was closed or not. I just know that that's what it was ordered to have a hearing.
I wasn't under the, I wasn't under the impression that it was closed, but?
Okay. The recommendations were filed by the fiduciary commissioner. That's what was appealed by the petitioner. And then that's, Judge Scott put it in the, in the order to reopen it. So that might have just been semantical. If it doesn't need reopen, it'll need to reopen.
Okay.
Do look at May 24th.
Our action is to schedule a hearing. She had submitted. What date are you talking about?
I would suggest May 24th.
Wait.
Okay. So.
That gives 30 days. They could have 30, 30 plus days.
So we just move to accept the remand, of course, and conduct a scheduled hearing.
On May 24th?
Yeah.
At what time?
May 24th, 10 o'clock or soon after.
Yeah.
So it'd be at the beginning of the meeting. The only question would be, would you like a conference with the fiduciary commissioner in advance of the hearing? Or would you just like a report?
Just a report.
Okay.
A report would be fine, just so we know a clarification.
So the second Commissioner Arnett's motion?
Pop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have done fiduciary reports unless there's any new ones?
No, that's all.
Okay. Introduction to new employees. Rachel Mitchell, come on down. Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
How are you guys today?
Great.
Great. I'm here to introduce Shelby Dillon. She will be our events coordinator at the Mon County Center.
Would you approve the position as presented?
Second.
Pop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Looking for, when is her first day?
She's going to start training for a few days here and there in the next couple of weeks and then she'll be a full-time maid.
Oh, great.
Great. Welcome to the county.
Welcome. Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing you around the building.
Yeah. Looking forward to it. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Litter Control. Alexander Hall, Litter Control Officer.
Hi.
Hey, how you doing?
Morning.
So obviously you guys know Alex. I'm asking for him to be put on payroll, and he's already on payroll. We're transferring him from transport.
Right. He's coming over to our team, full-time exempt position, benefit eligible. Salary is set at 40,000, 43,000 annually. And then we made that effective the 17th.
Move to approve the position as presented?
Second.
Pop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Welcome. And I heard you already are on the job.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This is very timely. I just received 10 emails last night from someone that has been a regular, really complaining about his site.
Oh, boy.
In the, in the Western End area. So I will forward those to you. And if you could make contact with that individual and assess the site, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely, sir.
Just remind me to send those to you, okay?
An apologies to the Sheriff's Department for swiping one of your body employees.
Yes, we took one of your. Thank you.
You can't have him back.
And we also have another new employee.
Yep.
Come on down.
Yes. Hello, Commissioners. We have Emily West here today. As you know, we have an open position. Thank you very much. That's full-time process transport, eligible for benefits at a pay rate of 2807, 20 a month. You did snatch a good employee. He'll do fine for you guys. He does a good job.
Thank you.
And other than that?
I move to approve the position as presented?
Second.
Pop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for training us so well. You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Are there any other new employees?
No, sir.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll have comments from the public. You have three to four minutes. Please state your name, address, and we look forward to hearing from you. Good morning, Jason.
Morning, Jason.
Good morning. My name is Jason Charles, the firstborn son of John James and Carlin Kay. I am known by no other name. I have no address to provide for you for it was taken from me when I was unlawfully incarcerated, to which no remedy has been offered. So I take it that nothing has been done to fix the pothole at the corner of University Avenue and Walnut Street. Is this one of those potholes that must not be fixed for generates a large amount of income for the rulers to spend? See, some of these potholes are not fixed because the roadway in the right of way of travel, or if the roadway in the right of way of travel were trouble-free, there would be less commerce, thus less taxable revenue for the state. More potholes, more tire damage, more tire damage, more spending, more spending, more taxes. It is designed to continue to make the average traveler feel helpless, and they must call upon the politician. While all the while, the politician is always claiming not to have enough money to fix the potholes. Yet knowing if they did, they would be the beginning of the end of their existence. Some potholes sustain the existence of the politician more than others. Less traveled roads don't have the capacity to warrant consideration of the politician power to act on behalf of the few that travel down its path. That way, less traveled is no concern to the politician. The best pothole for the politician is one that has a massive amount of travelers, causing just enough damage to the vessel in which they travel, yet is not enough to deter travel. They no longer serve to protect the value of the traveler, but are more like a business looking to generate more revenue to which they lord over like it was their hard work that generated the resource. If everyone traveled the path less taken, there would be more of a concern if a pothole was on that road. Yet a well-designed road leading to a destination, a desirable location, by a well-designed creator, I contend, would be flawless and provide every need for the weary traveler. But as I have hopefully pointed out here today, it is not in the interest of the politician to desire his obsolescence.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Steve Solomon, 194 West Park Avenue, Westover. Couple of things on my mind. One has to do with this Pleasant's Power Plant and Fort Martin Power Plant, which this county cannot afford to lose Fort Martin Power Plant. They have been paying an astronomical amount of taxes over the years. And I think a couple of years ago, WVU did a study that they paid like $3.4 million in property taxes, which I guess went to Mon County. They've been operating there since 1967. And we got Longview Power Plant that operates down there. And the people that own property down there are trying to develop it on Route 100 and Route 53, which is the Fort Martin Road. When you take prospective buyer or builder down there, by the time they go through Granville, the deal's done. That road is so bad through Granville. And right at the end of Granville, it's not the city limits, but the end of where most of the residents are, Department of Highway's patched a slip right there. And it work is so bad that most people drive around it. They stop. The trucks stop. That is so terrible. And then you just go on down and you got the Humphrey Straight Stretch, speed limit 55. But over the years, Department of Highway has patched the road on both sides. And the patches are so rough that most trucks can't pass. Why don't we usually stop or pull over completely to get down there? And then you've got speed bumps through the middle of it. Now you're going to take a prospective client down there or purchaser to develop some property. And they say, well, you know, what are they going to do about these roads? Fort Martin has paid a billion dollars' worth of taxes over the years. And the state has paid about probably less than $300,000 or $400,000 to fix that road since they started that power plant. It's like you don't take care of the place that generates your taxes. You don't spend any money. The county commission can't afford to spend money to fix the roads. But the Department of Highway's can, and they just ignore that part of the county. It's just ridiculous. And everything's moving out of that way. Everything's moving to Westover, moving down. Hardly any other place to go. But the roads are just terrible. Appreciate if, you know, you can bring that attention to the Department of Highway a little bit better than what the average person can. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in. Thank you, Mr. Solomon.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will close comments from the public. We'll have a small presentation from MON EMS.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Of course.
With MON EMS. We, I know we're not getting levy funds yet, but one of the things that was really important to us, I know you all have paper copies, but we're here to announce that MON EMS has put out a 2022 annual report. It's the first time that we've ever done anything like that. But I feel as though that as we are a public-facing, public model, that we need to be open and transparent. And we, I promised that to you all. We've been open to that all along the way. Want to make sure that that continues. So we're here to announce that we do have the paper copies available. We have a few available at our office. I will leave some here at the county. It is available, as of last Wednesday during the commission meeting, it was available on our website, but it didn't tell anybody because you all moved, which is totally fine because I think that was a good announcement. I won't bore you, but a couple of little highlights out there I thought was interesting was, one, you see that we titled it as a community report and not an annual report because I feel like we're very, you know, we are a community-facing entity. The, we focused on some of our folks in there. You'll see some of that, highlight some of the folks that have been here. Some things that I think are really interesting is that, you know, in the, one caveat, and I know Sean's the finance guy, the statistical data is for the calendar year and the financial data is the FY '22. And we did that. So if somebody does math and a couple of the numbers don't add up exactly, part of that is the reason is that we want to make sure we put an audited financial statements in our annual report and not mix financial years and make that sort of weird. That we, you know, in 2022, we traveled over 650,000 miles. Of that, only 200,000 of that was actually billable miles. So think about how expensive that gets on the vehicle side of things. When you start to look into some of the data, that we provided over 6,000 medications in 2022, which averages about 16 a day. So that starts to weigh in. Over 18,000 different interventions. Now, sometimes that might be as simple as a, as a splint or an ice pack. When you start to look at the impact per day, and sometimes there's multiple, a patient will get multiple interventions. But you're looking at, you know, over 45, 49 interventions a day that we're out here in the community doing. Something that I think is mindful as you, as you browse through that is the employees. Right now, our average years of experience for our EMTs is about 7.3 years. And our medics is about 11. That is decreasing. As folks move on from the workforce and as we get, you know, new and younger folks in there, we're losing that sort of institutional knowledge. We're doing our best to keep these folks. But I think that all of us in public safety are losing some of that institutional knowledge. We did focus, you'll see in one of those last pages there, we talked about the levy process. We thought it was important to put that out there while we did that. And we talked a little bit about, probably the biggest thing in there is that, you know, 32% of the time that we go on some sort of a call that something is not a reimbursable cost. And that's really what we, you know, the citizens supported us in our, in our initiative to do that. WVU is a big part of our, you know, community. Granted, they do pay for all of their services that we provide to them. So like anytime that we cover a graduation or a football game. But I think that the impact of that should also just be, be known that, so I know in there that we dug into football statistics because a lot of people always want to know about that, that of those 150-some, I believe, patients that were seen at a, at a football game, only 30-some of those actually went up to a hospital. So that means 110 of those patients we were able to treat and keep out of emergency departments to leave those beds open for that when we have our car wrecks or heart attacks at home, that those are available for our citizens to be there. So when WVU and others pay for these event services, event medicine, the true impact is not necessarily felt directly, but it's felt by having other resources available for you in your time of need. Our financial statements are in there, as you can see. And basically, a big thing is I want to let everybody know it's available. I'm happy to answer any questions if there's ideas or thoughts for next year. Of course, as soon as the paper hits the, as soon as the printer says the, we clear it to print two days later, we're like, oh, we should do this or we should change that. But we're always looking for new data for next year. It'll be a little more robust. We already have a bunch of ideas for that. We're going to focus next year on quality, being good citizens, or good stewards of the money that the citizens have entrusted us with, making sure that we're doing our best to increase our services and to build the infrastructure that Mon County needs and wants. So with that, I'll take any questions and?
Does anyone have any specific questions?
No. Thank you for including the community stuff because when I was looking at the WVU stuff, I immediately went to, okay, so I know you guys support all the local high school events and all those events at the track facility. Again, I, you know, you've done a wonderful job in your tenure in turning, turning what was a good resource for our citizens into an excellent resource. So I appreciate everything you've done. And the citizens have also expressed that gratitude by approving the levy. So looking forward to bigger and better things. And thank you so much for everything you and your organization do for us. I really appreciate it.
Just have one quick question.
Yes.
I noticed on, on your financials at a glance, your patient receivables nearly a million dollars. What would you say the percentage of that is that you'll actually collect?
On?
It's on your financials at a glance. I don't see page numbers, but it's toward the end, last couple of pages. It just has your assets and it has patient receivables, 992,000.
So that was, that was, that's on our balance sheet. That's the actual net money that was brought in.
That was already brought in, not, not owed to you. Okay.
Correct.
I was worried there for a second.
No, and we start to get into the actual, and I know, I know we dug a lot of this in the work sessions. We start to get into the receivables on the Medicare Medicaid side. It gets very frustrating to see how much money is not available to us.
That's what I was getting at. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the only other thing, as you mentioned on the vehicle data, that 20,000, 23,000 total calls, but only 15,000 roughly are billable, 7,400 are non-billable calls. And I think the public needs to understand that is why we need the levy to continue because that's almost 40%. So I appreciate, yeah. This is excellent. Yeah.
All of us want, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
But we all want that AMOS, you know, and sometimes, you know, like we talked during the levy process that we see somebody broken down along the road and they call an ambulance, they call a fire truck, they call police or law enforcement partners. And it might not be a need for an emergency, but we all want it when it's there.
Yes.
And then, you know, and sometimes we get there and the person felt just needed helped up or needed some other things and it's not always available service and?
Right. Well, we appreciate it and we, and I think this is excellent information that we will make sure we get out to the public.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Grants. Colleen Kuhn.
I have requests for reimbursement. The first one is for the steep grant in the amount of $7,685.45. The next one is on the Governor's Highway Safety Program, Save Communities, $588.98. Then I have ClickItOrTicket in the amount of $2,583.13. And lastly, impaired driving in the amount of $2,844.86.
Move to approve the president signing the grant documents as presented?
Second.
Pop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Correspondents.
Received a notice of approval of the, excuse me, levy estimate, the budget for fiscal year '24 that was approved by the West Virginia State Auditor's Office. That is, of course, was pending your setting of the levy rate, which you all did yesterday. So that's really good to hear. Comments?
No. Good.
Okay, great. That's all I have for correspondence.
Okay. Anyone else?
Tom, not on the agenda, but I did receive a letter from a Kirsten Moore regarding the Clay Patel FFA Annual Country Ham and Bacon Cell that will be held this Saturday at 6:00 at Clay Patel Auditorium. I plan on being there. It's a wonderful event every year. So Chris, or Kirsten, thank you for sending me the letter and reminding me because I almost had forgot about it, but so.
Did you say it was 6:00?
6:00, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And then I had, I received a letter from Mr. Solomon regarding Mon First Energy and Mon Power. So good information. I just got this. I haven't had a chance to read through it, but I did want to acknowledge that I did receive it.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business. New business, consideration approved request by Main Street Morgantown for the use of the Courthouse Square Papa Plaza event until May 18th and June 13th. That sounds sufficient.
Move to approve the request as presented?
Second.
Pop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of requisition number 76 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Requisition is for $1,137,206.47.
Move to approve requisition number 76 as presented?
Second.
Pop move in second.
Just for clarification, these are our sales tax collections, which is, right now, we're trending about 18.8% over last year's collections. So right now, with two months of the year left, we're right at where we were last year, only off by about 95,000. And we're projected to, last year, we collected 9.4 million. We're projecting to collect about 1.3 this year. So the fund is?
And those monies go to pay the bonds?
Yes.
Those districts are performing as, as expected, so.
So that's good news. Pop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider signing guarantee of lease and specialty lease agreement with GP Mountaineer LLC for space located in the Mountaineer Mall for the purpose of hosting the Mon County Election Center, storage for voting machines, and equipment and county poll worker training.
Move to approve the lease documents as presented?
Second.
Pop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
And that's a three-year lease from April through Mar, or May of, I'm sorry, March of 2026 with a three-year option that would take it to 2029.
Okay. Consider for approval, letter of support request by Healthy Kids for the ARC Power Initiative application.
Move to approve the letter, the letter of support as requested?
Second.
Pop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of appointment to the 17th Judicial Circuit Public Defender Corporation.
So if you recall, a few weeks ago, you got a notice that we had a resignation from the board. The Michael Sims, who's the head of that department, of that board, has made a suggestion of Jared Moore. He's a local attorney here in town. We did advertise that on our website, that there was an opening there for three, three, maybe three or four weeks. We haven't had any other, other people interested.
Do you know Mr. Moore?
I do not.
Okay. I don't either, but I would, I would move that we accept the recommendation of Jared Moore to replace Hilda Hedy, who recently resigned.
Second.
Pop move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anything other new business?
Yes. One other item came in. There is an application, actually, it's for an event today. On the Courthouse Square, they would like to use the square from 11:30 to 5:00. The group requesting it is the Kyle family, and it says for a spring party.
Move that we approve the request as presented.
Second.
Pop move in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now they have the permit. Okay. Any other new business?
No, sir.
Okay. Either, no. Okay. Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors, and I'd like to say hello to House Delegate Member Gino Cesarelli. If you wanted to come down and say anything, okay, we're not. Oh, okay. So, well, we appreciate you coming. We don't usually have too many delegates, and it is, it is important that you're here and represent us all. So, we appreciate that. And glad you survived the first year. Apparently.
We also, of course, have Mayor Lewis.
Well...
In regular attendance, but just recognize, thanks.
And just for...
And Latina.
And just for your information, I did submit to the DOH on a separate line item for Route 100 and the road that we were talking about, and that has been submitted about four times, and I keep submitting it. So, I do want you to know, even though it wasn't part of my list this afternoon, it is on the list as a separate item, because I thought it was more important to have it as a separate item. Just so you're aware of it. Okay. Reports from county commissioners.
Yeah, just a couple. Glad Forrest is here. I'd like to thank you for all your service to the county, and we had a situation with a, with a family member not too long ago in the Sheet Lake area, and made the call. I didn't identify myself as anyone special, just made a blank call, and you all were out there within 15 minutes, and your representatives there were very professional and basically told me to get the blank out of the way, because they need to do their business, which is what they need to do, because I have a tendency to butt in. And so, they...
Are you addressing me?
No.
They, they...
I can't hear a word you said.
They handled it with great care and professionalism, and I really appreciate it. EMS, you don't think about them until you need them, as we've talked about. And while it wasn't our position to come out in favor or against, or promote or not promote the levy, we're certainly happy with the results. At least I can speak for myself that I am, and we look forward to working together going forward. Also, we had a jail bill meeting last week I was able to attend, and did get a report that the, it's ironic, the board member for the Public Defender's Office was mentioned, that the Public Defender's Office has really settled in nicely and are providing a great service when a, when a, a lot of times when a defendant is put forth for an initial hearing. Under the old system, it took a while to get their court-appointed lawyer connected with them, put together. Now, it's been a streamlined process, so the, they can call over to the Public Defender's Office and get someone over quicker, and that has had an added bonus of perhaps getting bonds posted prior to actually sending the defendant to the regional jail. So, it's kind of helped speed that process up and perhaps help us with some of the, some of the costs that we incur on the transport and on the, on the jail bill for folks that don't necessarily need to be held overnight, but if they didn't have counsel to represent them, sometimes it delayed that process. So, they were, the prosecution office was mentioning that it was, it's been working pretty well with the PD office, so I wanted to thank them for that. So, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Good. We need that help with the jail bill.
Yeah.
It's continuing to...
Can you say that again?
Yeah, that was one of the things that, when we were talking about the previous property tax discussion, and the state head said, well, we'll take over the jail bill, and we're like, take it, please. I mean, that would be a big relief to a lot of counties. MON County can handle that, that bill, but it's still a significant, it's a good chunk of our budget. And for some counties, it...
Yeah, it's going up.
It's going up, and we're already probably going to exceed our projections for this year. And then next year, there's a build-in increase with the, about 12% increase with the per diem increase. So, it doesn't seem to be going the right way, so we do need to focus on that a little bit. And Gino, maybe we could use some of your help when the legislative session comes in. I had a little bit of a light schedule. I followed the Morgantown High School band to Orlando, Florida in the past week. So, last Wednesday, we flew down and met the band that had gone via bus, a two-day trip. And the band performed in the middle of the Magic Kingdom on Friday. The choral group also was with them, and they performed, I can't, I don't know what days they performed on, but they were also down there, too. So, they had a full week in Disney World, so was down there with them, and of course, because my daughter's in the band. Got back just in time for the annual laying of the levy that we did yesterday. We talked, we talked a lot about that yesterday in regards to where MON County is. In the past seven years, we've either lowered, five years, the levy rate or held it constant. So, we've really been kind of wrestling with controlling and stabilizing our finances here in the county, and it's, it's a lot of work on behalf of the commission and our staff to be able to achieve that. Last year, when we lowered the levy rate to 11 cents, $100, we were, we became the lowest county regular rate in the state. I don't know, we don't know where our fiscal year '24 rate will go, which we held constant from last year. But I assume with the way the rest of the state's going, we're probably still going to be the lowest in the state. Most of the counties in the state don't have any, near the flexibility we have in MON County because of that lower rate, where we can actually adjust to deal with future instances. And even with this year's budget, which was just approved by the Auditor's Office, this year was still probably one of the most challenging years, because we were seeing a lot of things with revenue, and part of that could be, well, there's a bunch of reasons, but part of it could be from the Mylan plant closure, finally starting to see a little bit of that impact in our collections. But as we've never taken our eye off of economic development, we've really kind of minimized that impact. So, it's really hard to tell at any one time, but we do keep a close, close eye on where we're at, at any, at any point. So, I want to thank everybody for their effort in that, you know, it's a, it's a five-minute meeting that we have to have once a year, but that one action speaks volumes to how diligent we are about keeping an eye on our, the county's finances, and we continue to keep an eye on the county's finances. And we don't make knee-jerk reactions one way or the other. We just slowly, methodically move along. So, I want to thank my fellow commissioners and all our staff for all of our effort in doing that, and all the county offices as far as the budget process, seeing what we're trying to do and really buying in. Today's a regular day. Tomorrow, I don't have any meetings. Friday, we have staff reports, and then I do an annual Earth Day presentation at Eastwood Elementary. So, I'll do that on Friday. It's one of my funnest events of the year, going in, talking to, I think it's the fourth and fifth grade, or maybe it's the third and fourth, but it's two grades at Eastwood. And I go there, and I talk for about five minutes, but all they want to know is who won the T-shirt contest. The company that I work for, Key Logic, sponsors a annual T-shirt contest, and they allow the kids to design a T-shirt. So, they all do posters for Earth Day and what Earth Day means to them. And then the winning entry is put on the back of a T-shirt that is awarded at this, at this assembly to all the kids. So, it's a big deal for, between all your fellow schoolmates to go around with the design. It's in your name on the back of the T-shirt. So, it's pretty cool. Also, Friday afternoon, I have a broadband tag-up to keep, keep, keep up to speed on where we are with our project, especially on the western end. Saturday, as I mentioned, is the Clay Patel FFA Annual Ham, Bacon, and Egg Sale, and I plan to participate in that. Other than that, Gino, again, thanks for coming. It is pretty rare when the delegates, other than Delegate Statler, it is pretty rare for delegates to come to our meeting, but I think that ought, that ought to occur. And same thing, you know, there's, you ever, you ever want to have our, share our ideas or hear our ideas regarding anything, you know, that, come to us, and that invitation goes out to all the delegates. And all of them, most of them do regularly keep in contact. I hear from Evan Hansen all the time. I hear from John Williams all the time, because they all, they're, they may be working on things that are up my alley, so that's why I hear from them. But I'm, I'm sure we all hear from different ones all the time. Obviously, I hear from Joe Statler almost regularly. So, thanks for coming. I really do appreciate. And Forrest, again, thank you for your efforts. This is a, you know, something that, to really, as far as across the state, to show people how it needs to be done, how EMS services should be done, and I appreciate you leading that charge. So, thank you. That's all I have.
You have a number of issues. First, from April 6th to April 8th, I was fortunate, I went into Philadelphia to be with my family seder, and I just want to acknowledge that this was our 138th annual family seder. It's a tradition that we do, and it, and it is just amazing, and I like to say that each year.
Were you at the first one?
Yes. My brother was. But this was a great week, because I was fortunate to represent the county commissioners at the signing in Charleston with the governor, with Umbio and Baby Dog of the $100 million insulin facility project. And this is another game-changer that it is great to go down there, and as on one hand, we're talking about Umbio. The other, we're talking about Mountain Top Bottling Company. I talked to Jeff Sokol last night, and they are hoping within the next two to three weeks to start production. They believe they're ready to go. They're finishing up the FDA final results, that they have to do the testing, but they're looking forward. And to have those two industries to promote, and then when we have Mylan, people do not understand that even though people may not go into Mylan, it is a game changer that people come down, look at the building, and that allows us to look at other areas in Montague County. And one of the first questions, we met the next day at the city of Morgantown, and the first question they asked was, do you think that we can attract many of those Mylan workers back to our facility? That's what Umbio said. And that's great to hear. They are wanting those members, and we're looking at 18 months out of the way, but they are looking, and if and when, I should say, there's 200 jobs are built, and then they build it, the entire building, it could be up to 1,200, and then it's going to be an entire campus up there. So, it was just a great, great meeting, and the best part of it was the investors were all there in Charleston. A lot of times, you get told, oh, we have a company coming. It's great to see the investors there, because then you know what's going through. So, this was something that was really exciting, and I really believe, we gave them a Mountaineer, the president, John, and he was, it was really neat. He, he said, I am now a Mountaineer, and it was great. I think he's going to fit right in our community. And I can't say enough about Russ Rogerson, who really helped put everything together, and WVU. The second thing is that we received information on 4 o'clock on April 26, the MON County Victim Assistance Program is going to have a event candlelight vigil at the Courthouse Square, and I wanted the public to know about that. Let's see, I have that. The Mountaineer Showcase, which is the really big track event up at the, at our track up at Mylan Park, is April 22nd, and that is this Saturday. That's a great event. And I also want to, one more thing that we were doing, I've been meeting, sending emails with WVU and the city of Morgantown about the panhandling ordinance. We have had some discussions on what possibly can be passed and what cannot be passed, and we are looking forward to meeting in May, to have a meeting to discuss the next step. But that is moving forward. I just wanted you to know that. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Second.
We be gone.